Manana Sizus, I'm Zetoros and welcome to your Guam Legislature. Today's public hearing is conducted by the Committee on Finance and Government Operations and is called to order at 09:03 on May 5, 2025. First notice of this public hearing was disseminated to all senators and media outlets on April 28, 2025, with its second notice disseminated on May 2, 2025. The hearing notices were also made available on the Guam Legislature's website, our legislative calendar, and the government of Guam's public notice portal. This morning, the committee will hear testimony on Bill 118-38COR, introduced by Senator Sabrina Salas-Montanani, an act to add a new 26203.4 to Chapter 26, Title 11 of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing a business-privileged tax discount on Medicaid receipts to be known as the Guam Medicaid Access Enhancement Act. The committee will also hear the following bill this morning: Bill Number 93-38COR, Committee on Rules by Request of Imaga Hagan Guahan, the Governor of Guam, in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam, an act to add a new item 40 to 26203K of Chapter 26, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, relative to exempting amounts received from Medicaid payments for eligible services by health care providers from business-privileged taxes. At this time, I would like to welcome my colleagues that have joined me this morning, and that is, of course, Vice Speaker Tony Ada, the vice chair of this committee. Good morning. The author of one of the bills here, Sabrina Salas-Montanani. Senator, thank you for being with us. Also, we have Senator Chirlahi, Senator Calvo, and Senator Telo Taidegui. Thank you, senators, for joining us this morning. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone in attendance of the alleged student Guahan's general rules of conduct: Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chairperson before speaking and shall state their full name for record-keeping purposes. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance and nature of the bill. On the agenda, personal inferences as to character or motive of any senator or individual testifying are not permitted. The chairperson of the committee may order the removal of any member of the alleged student Guahan or the public audience who fails to observe proper decorum pursuant to the 38th Guam Legislature Standing Rules. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in immediate removal from this public hearing room. With that, we will now proceed to hear testimony on Bill Number 118-38COR. And being that the author is, of course, Senator Sabrina Salas-Montanani, I will now go to you, Senator, for your opening statement.
Thank you, Chairman Duñez, for holding this public hearing. Welcome to the panel, my colleagues and everyone joining us today. I introduce Bill 11838, known as the Guam Medicaid Access Enhancement Act, to address the root cause of providers' hesitancy to take on Medicaid patients by making it financially viable for more health care providers to accept Medicaid patients. I understand that a Medicaid-centric bill presented by Governor Lou Leon Guerrero and introduced through the Committee on Rules will also be heard today. I want to make it clear that this is not about competition and certainly not about who gets credit. I believe that the governor's bill has the same intention, which is to open up pathways to health care for the thousands who struggle to get access. We've just proposed different methods on how to achieve this mission. I'm happy that both pieces of legislation will get their opportunity to be heard, discussed, and debated. If passed into law, the Medicaid Enhancement Act will increase access to quality health care for our most vulnerable residents, 30,000-plus Medicaid enrollees, who aren't just numbers. They are Guam's families, Guam's children. They are the very reason I ran for senator and why I wake up every day to get to work. Bill 118 will implement a tiered tax benefit system rather than a blanket exemption. It will help offset the financial impact of low Medicaid reimbursement rates without requiring additional appropriations. The incentive structure will reward providers who employ more qualified health care professionals and establish multiple service locations across the island. Once passed into law, the Medicaid Access Enhancement Act will reduce strain on emergency departments and the higher costs for care by ensuring more appropriate preventative and primary care options are available to Medicaid beneficiaries. While providing greater health care access, this legislation also calls for a clear audit trail, enhancing our ability to prevent Medicaid fraud and ensure accountability, an issue raised by the public auditor and the Office of Public Accountability. Safeguards include appropriate penalties for noncompliance, protecting taxpayers while still encouraging provider participation, and the Medicaid Access Enhancement Act requires annual progress reports to the legislature and the governor, ensuring transparency and enabling evidence-based policy adjustments. Thank you again to Chairman Duñez and my senatorial colleagues. Thank you to our panel that will be testifying for being here, again, for your testimony and for playing an integral role in improving public services on our island.
Sizus Masi, Senator Montanani. Can anyone, everyone who has signed up for oral testimony just go ahead and be coming forward? What I see on my sign-in sheet is Dr. Villanueva, is that correct? Also, I believe we have Dr. Niame. I believe we have Lilian Posadas, GMH CEO. Dr. Hoa Nguyen, Dr. Hoa, please come forward. Therese Ariola, DPHSS. And Jean Flores, so far, from Bureau Women's Affairs. So far, those are all that have signed up for oral testimony that I can read from my signup sheet. Is there anyone else who wishes to provide testimony that's here, oral? Sir, please come forward. I don't know how I missed that, but I'll just have you identify yourself anyways when we get to you, okay? So, folks, I don't know if you're testifying on both bills, but I know we all agree with one thing. Doctors are at a premium here, and while we're all very busy people, there's a chance that they will need to run out and take care of business, saving lives. So I'm going to start to my left. Doc Villanueva, please proceed.
Half a day, Manana Sizus. Thank you, Chairman Duñez, members of the 38th Guam Legislature. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to testify in support of both measures. But I will speak more in depth about Bill 118, the measure before us.
Doc, excuse me, I'm so sorry that I did that to you. Doc Manalotu.
Yeah, no, not a problem.
Please go forward.
So I stand before here to support both measures, but I'll be speaking a little bit more in depth about Bill 118 as they both have similar consequences from both the health care as well as the financial side. I wear multiple hats, one as a health care executive, but more importantly, one that's more near and dear to me, which is a physician, which is taking care of patients. Whenever any measure dealing with our patients comes before me, I ask three Ws: what, whom, but more importantly, why. What is Bill 118? Bill 118 seeks to expand access to a certain segment of our population, the Medicaid population, through a tiered approach of tax abatement that is progressive, meaning that the more that a provider or a health care entity engages with the government of Guam to provide services for our Medicaid population, the higher the incentives. So it's a carrot approach in which to incentivize providers, who may not necessarily take Medicaid right now, to service this specific population. Now, for the whom does this measure affect? I want to share to you guys a brief little story. When I first came back from training from the University of Hawaii, and I first started working during COVID, one of the things that was very much a joy to me as a doctor was seeing a COVID patient go home. And most especially seeing our Monamku go home. And during one chance encounter, I had one of these patients, one of our Monamku, 70 years old, beat probably one of the biggest challenges of our lifetime in public health, which was the COVID infection. I was so happy to go to her room to explain to her that now she can go home. And I sat down right next to her and I said, "Saïna, I have good news for you. We were able to secure your oxygen. It's been approved by Medicaid." Portable oxygens during this time were a gold. They were a commodity, just as eggs are right now. They were a commodity because they were scarce. And as I was explaining everything to her enthusiastically, she just gave a smile to her face, not saying anything. I repeated myself again, "Saïna, you can go home now. We were able to secure your oxygen." And she smiles to me and says to me in a very soft voice, "My boy," because I do look like a boy. She says to me, "My boy, thank you, I understood everything. But I'm sorry, I can't go home. I don't have power in my home. I only have a generator." And that speaks to the challenges that, to me, illustrated in a vivid manner what this is all about, which is health care of the people. Although she had gone through all the tough medical battles that she had to, there was still a reality of things. And that's something faced by our 8,823 Monamkus on Medicaid and the larger, broader population of Medicaid that stands at around 49,230. These are the people that we are talking about. It is the most vulnerable, as Senator Sabrina said, of our population. They are the ones that need the most help, and they are the ones that is targeted by this bill. Now, how much will this cost? There is a cost to everything, there is no free lunch. What is the annual cost to the government of Guam? And if you take out at the most, I would say, liberal estimate that you can have, or most conservative, actually, estimate that you have, you back out hospitalizations, which are not GRT taxable, as well as SNU, you project this to be around 5.7 million, is my estimate, or an average cost of $117 per Medicaid recipient. Now, more importantly, we turn to the why. Why would you support a measure like this? Besides just the financial aspects of it, there's a human aspect of it. Living on Guam for the past 35 years, the island has changed so much, society has changed so much. We've gone from an age where information is so easily accessible, right? Where clicks, likes, subscribes is the name of the game. But I want to reflect upon the message of our deceased holy father and his 12 years on that papal throne, which is a message of mercy. And that's really what these two bills are about, both measures. Many roads lead to Rome, but the intent is to provide mercy to our most vulnerable. And in a public sphere and discussion where everyone is talking about greatness, we should be talking about keeping Guam good. Because the greatness of this island lies in the goodness of its people. And I humbly ask for, do your due diligence as lawmakers, go through both measures, debate on it. Really go through the process of, you know, the iron ringer of what is expected of this body. But I want you guys to always come back to that, that these bills are really a message of mercy. And in doing so, we help not just those under the Medicaid plan, but our entire community. Sizus Masi.
Sizus Masi, Dr. Edison Manalotu. And I, once again, my sincere apologies in my misreading. Some people may not know, but Dr. Manalotu also has another expertise, and that's finance. He's done great work in government finance as well, so he knows of which he speaks. And also, your words actually echoed the late Pope that has just passed away, Francis. So you really spoke to, very passionately about that, and I appreciate that. Dr. Hoa Nguyen.
Hi, good morning, and thank you so much for letting us go first. Yes, we have to go back to outpatient care. I echo with Dr. Manalotu is that I support the bill to kind of whatever we can do to help the Medicaid population. There's not a lot of clinic that provide primary care to probably the most important group of patients, the indigenous population of Medicaid. They really have a lot of problem access to a primary care, including, you know, transportation, contact, try to contact them. There's a lot of way that they have a lot of challenge. And then on top of that, they will have problems going to access a primary care on the private side and including public health. It's a lot to handle. So go back to the Medicaid. As you can see, Medicaid basically mirror Medicare rate for reimbursement. So from, on the private side, I cannot speak for the hospital nor the public health, on the private side, they medicate, mirror Medicare. So they are the lowest payment of all the private insurance. So typically, when we negotiate with the private insurance, we base on Medicare rate plus certain percentage on top of that. It ranges anywhere from 10% up to 40% on the private side. You know, that's for the private insurance. Medicare in the past will pay you the Medicare rate plus 10% because they consider it as remote. We kind of lost that 10% for about two, three years because I think there's a mistake somewhere when we report to the federal side, and they didn't recognize Guam as a remote location, so they took away the 10%. But as of this year, they're going to start to reimburse Medicare plus 10% because, again, we are in a remote location. Now, that's something that Medicaid doesn't follow Medicare. No, they just pay strictly Medicare rate, but minus the 10%. They don't have that. So now Medicaid is by far the lowest payment of any insurance company, federal or private, on the island. So again, a lot of clinic decide not to take Medicaid, including a lot of specialty clinic. So it's really hard for them to have an open schedule and have a private insurance, like tech care, select care, stay well, net care, to compete with the lowest paid patient of them all. So a lot of them just don't want to put the headache, and they decide not to take them. So anything that we can do in order to incentivize the primary care side of the house to see the Medicaid patient, it would be helpful. There's a study by a lot of medical students. I think a few senators have them and see them in the past and show current data of how much the cost is for Medicaid on the island. And for the past few years, there's an exponential increase. It's so high, it's just, it will wake you up when you look at the graph. And the highest the cost of the Medicaid patient really is in the hospital. The reason is, we cannot provide a primary care for the Medicaid patient. They will use a hospital, and they end up in a hospital when for that mission is very expensive. You know, for a regular visit, it ranges anywhere from $90 to $150, but for hospital admission, it's anywhere from $20,000 to $50,000,000 for Medicaid patient. So the cost will be, we can be cut down a lot for people in Guam if they can have increase on the access of primary care on the outside. Again, we have anywhere from 30,000 to 40,000 Medicaid patient on the island. As much as public health can try to provide them care, and I talked to Therese a few times, and then it's very hard for them to get in and take care of all the 30,000, 40,000. So this is where it's a public-private partnership. We have to work with public health somehow to provide care for them. As big as AMC at this point, we have about 3,000 to 4,000 Medicaid patient on our panel, but still, it's challenged to get them in. As I talked to Therese, as much as we have a very call center, keep calling patients, remind them the appointment, everything, they still have the highest rate of misappointment just because, again, the transportation and all that kind of stuff. So that's another reason why a lot of health, you know, private health care, they don't want to take Medicaid. So I think, so go back on a number, even if you tier, you know, the 5%, up to 5% on the GRT, you still, if a clinic can meet that 5% and get the 100% of Medicaid, you're still at the lowest payment of them all, again, because Medicare plus 10%. So anything would be helpful is the first step that we can try to help with. Try, again, I don't think that even passing the bill, we're going to fix the Medicaid access problem to the health care, but at least every life, every patient count. Again, if you talk about, you know, what impact on the government on the taxes, if they get 5%, I don't think it's going to be that big a number. I'm not a number guy like Dr. Manalotu does. But if you talk about, you know, 3,000 to 4,000 patient, that 5% would not even put a ding on the GOAM budget just because it's so, so few. Again, the primary care side is cheap, specialty side expensive. As I know, because we take care of a lot of OB patient and refer to OB specialists, and I tell you, they have two truly OB clinic that will see OB patient, Dr. Shea and SDA, and those are the main clinic we refer to. I know SDA take Medicaid, but Dr. Shea will take Medicaid in special case when we really call and talk to him and endorse the case just because the patient is a high-risk patient. They would make exception to take them, but otherwise, they don't take them at all. That put the burden to public health and see OB patient, and especially the high-risk OB. That's why I think the mortality rate of the newborn is so high because the prenatal care is not that good here in Guam. So I really, it's, again, if any concern on the impact on the GOAM, on the 5% rebate on this Medicaid access for the patient, I truly, the primary care side have such a small number of Medicaid right now. Even with increase by 10% with this bill, it wouldn't impact anything on GOAM and ability to provide, you know, for other service in GOAM. Again, the most expensive Medicaid right now is the hospital. You know, it's so much, I will try to get the study from Kai Akamoto, and I'm not sure who I'm going to send it to, but I can send to Sabrina, and then she can spread out to everyone. So you can appreciate the magnitude of the Medicaid use through the hospital. And again, the bill is the first step. We cannot fix everything, but I truly appreciate we can support the bill. So that way, again, it helps to incentivize a few providers out there to accept the Medicaid and open their door more. Thank you so much.
Sizus Masi, Dr. Hoa Nguyen. I'd like to also welcome one of our colleagues, Senator Gumitauta. Panel, I'm also going, I believe Dr. Niame got called out more than likely. So I'm going to have our questioning for the docs, and then we'll proceed with the panel. Doc, do you have to leave as well? Okay. Okay, you're mine.
Chairman Duñez, I just wanted to say, if there's any questions, I need to leave pretty soon, but I'm very much willing to answer anything from the panel.
I got your back. I got your back. Senator Bree.
I don't have any questions. Just wanted to say thank you, Dr. Hoa and Dr. Edison, for testifying today, something that you mentioned about, you know, the cost and the roughly $6-point million price tag. And for those who may say, "Can we afford this?" My response really is, can we not afford to do this? Because the impact, the benefits far outweigh the cost. Because this really isn't about money, it's about helping our people, especially the most vulnerable. So thank you.
Sizus Masi, Senator Montanani. Vice Speaker Ada.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions of Dr. Nguyen and Dr. Manalotu. I'd just like to thank them for coming out and giving us their perspective on the legislation, and, you know, especially with Dr. Manalotu's expertise in finance as well, a different perspective on how we can approach these bills and what it does to actually help our people, and most especially the most vulnerable, our senior citizens. We're, thank you again for coming out, and I look forward to moving forward with these presentations.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Tony Ada. Senator Taidegui.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning to my colleagues. And of course, thank you, doctors, for taking the time to spend out. I just do have one question. Appreciate everything that you mentioned. Of course, there is definitely a need to assist those most vulnerable, and I thank you for advocating for that. However, I've been told that with Medicaid, a lot of the issue is that the government, the reason why doctors are not accepting them is the fact that they're not getting paid from the government. They're having issues receiving the money once they accept a patient. And I haven't heard any of that from the two of you today, but I've heard from other doctors. The biggest problem is that they're not getting paid.
Senator Taidegui, I think that was, has been a historical perspective of Medicaid, where it's been. I think, you know, Director Ariola has done a great job to expedite payments. And generally speaking, the ability of Medicaid to be able to pay out these things, it mirrors just the government of Guam because of the match. So if the government of Guam's finances are healthy, which they are, we have excess revenues, then these payments are not a problem. So it's just a matter of having the cash to be able to pay for it. And historically, you're right. You know, when the government was going through a lot of financial challenges, 10, you know, five, 10 years ago even, when they had to take out the bond borrowing, we couldn't pay refunds and everything, that definitely was a real issue. But now that the government has a healthier, you know, financial perspective, it's able to actually pay its bills to the Medicaid providers.
Senator Taidegui, you know.
Also, Dr. Can you state your name for the record? And because when you opened up, you didn't mention your name and your title and where you're from.
I'm sorry, it's Dr. Nguyen. I'm basically from American Medical Center. And, you know, from the standpoint of payment, in the past, you know, really Medicaid cannot pay you until any six months, a year, or longer sometime. But I think that when Therese took over, it'd been a lot better. You know, we don't get paid as fast as the private insurance, but the payment has come as frequent within, you know, I think from the last meeting we had, about two to three months, we got the payment already, so it's much better. Again, the challenge to provider to have on accept Medicaid is also a lot, like I say, transportation, misappointment, phone call, that's the biggest challenge. You know, we can book the patient, and we'll say about 30 to 40% of the time. know, we can book the patient, and we say about 30 to 40% of the time, the Medicaid patient doesn't show up because of multiple reasons, and that's put a lot of impact on the healthcare provider, because that appointment could be taken by someone else. I talked to Theresa, we've met with her before, and tried to see we can improve somehow the communication within public health and the patient and us and patient to make sure they improve, that they don't miss their appointment. But I would say that, for credit of public health, they do keep up the payment much better than before.
Well, that's very, very good news to hear, because I've heard from other providers, you know, even up today, pardon me, even up to today's time, that the reasoning for that, but Guam, you know, I'm worried too, that I hope you don't lose faith in this government, even when we're struggling, we are going to be struggling in the next, you know, fiscal year, and probably in the next following that, but I appreciate your honesty and bringing that forward, and if you have any problems, I'm pretty sure if you have any problems with payment, you're going to let somebody know in this body, so that we can ensure that we don't go back to history, repeat history on not paying those, because that's how we lose doctors. So I thank you so much, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Jesus Massey, Senator Titegwe, Senator Julye.
Jesus Massey, Mr. Chair, thank you doctors for your testimonies this morning. So I just wanted to follow up, if we have doctors already receiving Medicaid patients, and I'm very grateful that was not the case before, and because of public health's work to be more timely with their payments, I think that's helped a lot. But I guess if you could just explain again, Dr. Manaloto, you said, you know, this is going to help those patients who don't have power and water at their homes, who, I don't understand that, like, the Medicaid is being paid for by the government, so those patients are not seeing the cash at all. So how does, how does this bill giving tax breaks to the providers help the patients directly?
So, a good question, Senator Tlahe, I think the story I shared was just a snippet of it, of really what the real challenges are of healthcare, practicing on healthcare on island. We don't have long-term care facilities, we don't have all the infrastructure, and I always explain this to my patients, we don't have all the infrastructures that's available in most states. Now, let's say, for example, going back to a hypothetical patient, not all pharmacies accept Medicaid, right? Certain pharmacies, because of the cost of the medication, are only carried, they go, they're private businesses, they have to pay their payroll, they have to survive, and for them, the late payments that you describe, they cannot afford that, because they have to pay out all these things. So if there's a certain pharmacy that carries, not all pharmacies carry all medications, that's why you have patients going from a pharmacy up in Dedidu all the way down to, you know, not to endorse them, but Saganamut, because there are specialty medications that's only carried by certain pharmacies on island. So your goal really is to, in order to expand this access, get better care, if that patient doesn't get that medication, guess what? They don't get better. And if they have to drive, besides just the transportation problem of having to go to their appointments, but if they have to drive multiple locations, just trying to get that medication, it's much easier to drive to the ER. And unfortunately, that's what's happening. They're going to the ER, getting that medication filled at the ER. So anyways, we're not saying, I don't think this is by any chance a silver bullet, there are a lot of problems in order to deal with access. It's a multifactorial issue, but I think this addresses one part of it, and I think it's a good start to a larger discussion of healthcare access on the island.
You're not saying it directly, but you're implying that if we give a tax break to pharmacies who are providing or accepting Medicaid, that more pharmacies will accept Medicaid?
Yes, that's exactly it.
Yeah, but can you show us anything that shows that to be true? Because right now, the market has done that for itself. We have providers providing Medicaid, except for some, as you said, and, but a lot of them are, and maybe good for those pharmacies who are accepting Medicaid, they've found that to be beneficial to their, to their bottom line.
It's also to increase access to not, all pharmacies are the same size. So if the smaller pharmacies, if the Medicaid patient, let's say, is in Dedidu, and that pharmacy closer to their home, right, they're not having to travel much further.
Right, that's a big if, I guess, and that's what I'm asking, if anyone has any data to show us that that's actually what's going to happen, because we don't hear from them that that's their problem, right? Because they, the Medicaid rates are established somewhere else, so, yeah, that, and the timeliness is not their problem anymore, so it's just, they just, in their model, have decided not to do that. What makes you think, Dr. Nguyen, that those providers, for example, those who are doing OB services, maybe they're not certified OBs, are going to accept this Medicaid, or patients, now that, now that we've, you're telling me they're not accepting Medicaid patients now, but if we give them this percentage of a tax break, that they are going to accept Medicaid patients? What makes you think that, what do we have, is there a survey, is there any kind of data that we can rely on that says that that's actually going to happen?
You know, I can speak for the primary care side of the house, because that's what we do. On the specialty side of the house, you know, like ENT or OB, I don't know the reimbursement rate, so, but I know that only SDA have a full acceptance for Medicaid, you know, I know To Do also accept Medicaid, but again, they don't have privilege in the hospital, and Shea is again, have privilege in the hospital and outside, but he only accept when we really endorse to him. Now, the rest of the clinic that provide OB care, you know, I know they don't accept Medicaid, for sure, and I cannot explain the reason why.
We don't know why, that's what I mean, what problem are we solving if we don't know the reason why they're not accepting? And for, maybe, we can, we should leverage, you said they don't have, what is it, the rights at the hospital?
Yeah, I think it's important for any OB clinic that provide, you know, care, especially the high-risk, that they have privilege to the hospital, because it's continual care, and therefore, for the pregnant women, it's important for them to know the OB, and that's person deliver them in the hospital. But again, I think it's boiled down to the low payment, I'd like to say, I don't know their reimbursement rate for OB, because they usually come in the package, right, that means the prenatal care and the hospital at the same time. For primary care, we just know about outpatient reimbursement, we don't involve the hospital. So again, the bill won't fix anything, like I say, everything that we can think of, but again, the primary care side, that's the most expensive. When you see the presentation for Kai Akamoto and the medical student does, you understand that it's the chronic care management for people who have hypertension, diabetes, and cholesterol problem, prevent them from stroke and heart attack.
Should be dealt with outside of the hospital.
Absolutely.
Yes, we all agree, that's why we want these public health centers open, right?
That's a small cost, and again, as much as public health can try, it's very hard to deal with 30, 40,000 patient to do chronic care management, typically you have to see them every three months, and that's, it's a lot of patient to do, you know, we have 40,000 patients or so in our clinic, and that's a challenge for us to even take care of that 40,000 patients, so for public health to do 30,000 officially, it'd be a very big challenge, that's why it should be a public-private, and as much as we can incentivize the private side to do that, it would be help. Even with pick up 1,000 or 2,000 patient, it still help 1,000, 2,000 patient, and we usually screen out and pick up the most sick patient of them all, you know, if you cough and cold, we usually don't accept you, but if you have a lot of chronic care management that can put your life at risk, we usually accept those patient.
All right, I understand what you're trying to say, it's indirect, and it's kind of an assumption, and maybe you think you have data somewhere else that's going to prove that, I'd like to see that, but for me, I feel like you doctors and you clinics that have accepted Medicaid, we should be rewarding you, I agree, maybe this is the reward, give a tax break to them, but I just feel like, but the market has worked, it has, we have doctors who are accepting Medicaid, and we have hospitals and clinics accepting Medicaid, and I can't imagine that these specialists who have refused to accept Medicaid patients on Guam are now going to accept Medicaid patients because of this, this small adjustment of the rate, like that, as if that was their issue all along, I don't know, but, so I'd like to see what that study you're talking about, but I agree, of course, the more doctors we have, the better, but I just kind of want to see how that ties in right now, because there is another side to this, right? We have pledged much of our BPT to bond payments, the rest, we have really leveraged for care at the hospital, and so we're going to take money away that's available for the hospital with, without, that's direct care to patients versus, yeah, indirect hoping that more doctors are going to take up Medicaid, I guess. Has the, have the physicians associations ever done any survey or any, anything like that? I think the public health used to do this, you know, tried to get more people to be providers and to find out the reasons why they were not.
I don't think GMA and GMS have a, do a survey on why they, the majority of the provider don't take the Medicaid. That's a, that's a good thing, I can bring it up to our association and see if they can do that, it's just a tally to see why. Again, you know, like 1,000 or 2,000 patient, our 30, 40,000 patient is a small fraction, but again, if we can pick out the most sick patient, then those are the people that we keep away from the hospital.
All right, I appreciate that. Dr. Nguyen, Dr. Manaloto.
Senator Tlahe, so I can provide some studies from off-island, though, we don't have anything local, and I think that's always been a challenge, is trying to get local studies, because being in an island is quite different, the dynamics, we can speak about, you know, the average cost of readmissions in the mainland, the readmission rate for Medicaid there is about 25%, nationally it's about 14, but I think one of the aspects that this bill does try to assess is that specifically, and one of, part of the annual reporting is that, an assessment of the impact of this section of Medicaid access and service delivery, so it actually does mandate public health to be able to collect this data that we need, and to show it to taxpayers, lawmakers, is it working to the governor, whoever is in these seats, right? Are these programs achieving what they're supposed to? And if not, you're right, looking at the cost of it, is it worth it? There are definitely other needs in the community, and looking at if this was not the intended outcome, so a part, a lot of this is on good faith, right? So a lot of it is on good faith, but also the good faith meaning there's a bit of teeth to it. If you falsify as a provider, there's a lockout period, so definitely there are enough teeth, I think, enough reporting requirements that 118 has.
Right, I just want to say, since we reduced the BPT for businesses before, remember the promise was, we will hire more employees, and we tried to track that on the BPT forums, but we have no reports from Revantax ever since, to whether more employees were actually hired with that reduced BPT, or whether customers saw a break in prices, so unable to prove, that's why I'm just asking, if there's something more, more concrete that we can tire this to. Jesus Massey, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Jesus Massey, Senator Julye, Senator Calvo.
Jesus Massey, Mr. Chair, hello everyone, buenas, thank you to the two good doctors for your testimonies, I really don't have a lot of questions right now, but I'm just curious, on a curious note, I wanted to ask if we have a number or a percentage of medical professionals, facilities, or entities that may join or agree to accept Medicaid if this bill is implemented?
The best hope that we can get is to have, especially the small provider, the small clinic, to open their door. As the big clinic, SDA, FHP, and AMC, we can absorb the Medicaid patient, because we have the other private insurance and the number to provide a care, but the individual clinic that have one or two provider, they usually either prefer to do just a private patient and not take the Medicaid patients, just because, again, as I talk about the premium that they pay for each visit, it kind of entice them to open at least a few appointment a day to accept the chronic care management for the Medicaid patient, or see the sick visit rather than having to go in there. So I would say confidently that the three big clinic are taking Medicaid, but the smaller one, that's why they try to entice them with anything for them to open a few appointment for the Medicaid patient. I say, I don't think it's going to be a big number, but any number would help, Senator.
So basically, we don't really have a percentage per se, we're just in the process of ensuring that more and more participants can come aboard, so we can have a better, better medical, you know, offerings to our community.
I think, for now, no one know that answer, that really, to do the study now, it won't be valid, because the clinic will say, yes, they will take, and then they end up, when they do the calculation, they won't take them. I think what we find out, if public health can help work with us regarding collecting the data after about a year or so, we will be much better, give you a much better answer. Right now, all we do is to hopefully open the access for these people, just because, again, I, when we take them into our clinic, because relatives really access them, really access to take over their brother, sister, their cousin, their parents, under our wing, just because they have, they cannot go anywhere. So we don't have the firm number for you, we just will hope and guess that any chance of this patient can get in, we will provide them that chance, and again, if public health can work with the private side, collect the data for the legislature, I think after about a year, you would have a much from the answer from us.
Thank you, doctor.
Thanks.
Yes, doc?
In the words of Senator Tlahe, the answer is a no. No, the answer is a no, we don't have the data, so--
Not at the moment, as per, as per mentioned, that's all I have to ask for now. Thank you so much for your testimonies, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Jesus Massey, Senator Calvo. I would imagine, though, the reporting requirement may get us a number, and really improve that, I think that's one of the best features of this bill, just my opinion. Senator Gumitato.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I only have just one question for the two doctors, and again, thank you for being with us this morning. Aside from a BPT exemption, which BBMR anticipates will impact in the millions that we collect annually on BPT receipts, what other ideas should policymakers consider to help encourage private physicians and clinics to participate in the Medicaid program? Maybe the use of government land for their clinics at a discounted lease rate, or at no cost to providers, or allowing them to occupy unused or underused government facilities which they can convert for medical use?
You know, in the past, you know, Dr. Akamoto and I, we often have idea to, we really need to work with public health, it's really, it's one island, it doesn't matter you, which engine you have, but the problem is that the one that, that gets hit the most is the indigenous population, and privately, we cannot handle ourselves, there's a lot of patient, public health cannot handle themselves because-- Public health cannot handle themselves because a lot of patient. You know, you talk about thirty thousand or forty thousand patient. It, it had to be some type of, you know, public and private partnership somehow that we had to work together. You know, it's like right now, we are trying to apply for the loan repayment for the physician, right? We pretty much come close to being, accepting a federal for that status. As soon as we have that, we can provide, probably recruit more physician for our clinic. And again, it should be a public-private partnership somehow that we can run the clinic together, somehow they give a budget and we have to live within that budget. And I think that if we can do that as an island, as one entity, we can, I can tell you a hundred percent that we will increase the access of care for the, for the indigenous population.
It's a great question, Senator Gumitato. I think the way to think about it is looking at it from a public policy lens is what is the cost of entry to do business on Guam? The more that we can be very targeted in terms of, like what the former speaker had said, Senator Lahey, it's like being very targeted once you have that data, this helps, right? Is it a location problem? How do you solve that location problem? And being very data-driven with it as far as being able to look at the impact, right? So being able to look at things besides taxes. Is it a water issue? Is it a utilities issue? Is it a zoning issue, right? What if your parents had a piece of property, right? Is it, how hard is it to rezone a property if they wanted to gift that to you as a private clinic? Not everybody wants to be an employed physician. Not everybody wants, you know, there's physicians that do want to get into different lines of work, meaning at public health, nonprofits and everything. And I think the more that we create, we create an environment in which you allow that to happen and to thrive, that's how you get better healthcare, right? So that the patients have more choices besides Dr. Manalot and Dr. Wen. I have now, instead of seeing two, two doctors, I have the choice of seeing thirty doctors. Instead of one neurosurgeon, we have five neurosurgeons. So anything that lowers the cost of entry, anything that supports the viability of those businesses, and most especially if it's targeted like this bill to a specific area that we want, right? We want to see access improved for Medicaid population. We want to see for self-pay for, as well as MIP, gear policies and tax policies, the power of the purse of the legislature, but gear it towards these things, things as little as, you know, business renewal, rezoning, all of these things taken into account. And, but in order to do that, you do have to have data, right? You know, we have a great resource in the University Regional Center of Public Policy. Maybe they can conduct a lot of this research as far as what are these entries, what are these barriers of entries? And then taking a look at what specific policies would encourage providers to open up, not just a matter of more providers, but there's also a question of geography, access to care in terms of geography. A big majority of our infrastructure is concentrated in the north, but if you can get these young ins, you know, these new graduates who want to come back and encourage them to open up a small clinic even in Talafofu, you know, you are making inroads in terms of access to care.
Thank you, Dr. Manalot and Dr. Wen for your responses. And yes, I would be more than happy to see a clinic go in Talafofu. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sisus Massey, Senator Gumitato. You know a few people down there, don't you?
Just a little, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for your test, for your questioning. And docs, thank you. We know your time is very critical and very precious, so we appreciate you coming here and just message for me. I just always am heartened by the fact that you come out and do everything you can to advocate for access because that's really what we're trying to do here. And I'm glad you're also okay with the reporting requirement. I think that's going to put a lot of, you know, teeth in, in our law and probably get us better results on the national level. So thank you very much and God bless you today and your patient care that you're going to be providing. So with that, as we excuse the doctors, I'll go to the CEO for Guam Hospital, doctor, or doctor. Doctor. Lilian Repadas.
Thank you and good morning, everybody. To confirm and to speak on behalf of Dr. Niame, he was called for an emergency neurosurgery. So that's why he had to leave. Buenos, Senator Chris Duñez, Chairman of the Committee on Finance and Government Operations, Vice Speaker Senator Tony Ada, Senator Sabrina Montanani, Chairperson of the Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs, and all senators present at this public hearing. First and foremost, thank you for this public hearing for us key stakeholders to express our views regarding this proposed legislation that I believe will help the vulnerable population have more access and options to get care outside of the hospital. As the GMA Hospital Administrator, submitted here with is our perspective and testimony in response to the proposed legislation, Bill Number 118 and 93. We agree and support the proposed concept as the overall intention is to encourage and incentivize more healthcare professionals and medical providers and clinics to accept and provide the much-needed medical services to Medicaid beneficiaries who are considered the most vulnerable and who really need to have access to prenatal care, as it was mentioned earlier, to primary care and to secondary prevention services, all as, as well as post-hostilization follow-up care services. We get readmissions into the hospital of patients who are not able to get seen and be followed up by, by doctors. And so that's why I think this bill will help. In addition to prenatal care, I had a phone call from a female individual who was pregnant for the first time. She tried so much to try and get prenatal care, you know, during her pregnancy. And unfortunately, because she was on Medicaid, she was not accepted. You know, there was one clinic that said, okay, we'll take you, but you need to pay up $5,000 upfront to be seen. And, you know, Medicaid patients don't have $5,000 in their account, excuse me, or in their pocket. So I believe that this Medicaid, this bill will help those individuals, especially the pregnant women who need prenatal care. There is also Bill 93-38 that was submitted by the governor. The concept and recommendation Governor Lou mentioned in her State of the Island address on March 12th, 2025 is to accept the revenues from the business privilege taxes received from healthcare providers who treat the most vulnerable men, women and children on Medicaid. Our administration at the hospital, in light of the fiscal notes on both bills, rather than exempt, we recommend and urge you in this committee, as well as all the senators of this 38 Guam Legislature, to substitute Bill 93-38 and Bill Number 118-38 with the following language. And I know, Senator Sabrina, you mentioned this is not a competition. It isn't, but you know, this is kind of like a solution, a joint solution, a collaborative solution, I think, will be then benefit, be beneficial for the island of Guam. Section one, a new section, subsection 58, 128 point eight, is hereby added to chapter 58, Title 12, Guam Code annotated to read, 100% rebate on unplugged BPT from Medicaid payments. An annual rebate of 100% of the unplugged business privilege taxes paid to the government of Guam by beneficiary on income received from the Medicaid payments for eligible services provided by healthcare providers in Guam may be issued for a period not to exceed twenty consecutive years from the effective date of a qualifying certificate. The beneficiary shall be a healthcare provider in Guam as defined in subsection 19104E of Chapter 19, Title 10, Guam Code annotated. Section two, within ninety days of the enactment of this act, the Administrator of the Guam Economic Development Authority shall pursuant to the administrative adjudication law, promulgate rules and regulations to implement the provisions of this act. And I mention this because in Bill 118, it's quite a, it's a tiered process for the discounts, the various discount, 20% to be a professional provider, 20% discount for all of the Medicaid receipts and another 20% for the site location. And then for the healthcare professional to submit a self-certification and for DRT to audit, to monitor, to track, you know, giving them this additional responsibility and duty. And we know, we all heard them, Director, DRT Director Marily Zama on April 24, that they're already challenged with human resources and resources. And then to give them this additional duties and responsibilities may just compromise their, their limited resources. So that's why we recommend that GIDA will be the one to then promulgate the rules and regs and to really manage this program. As the Hospital Administrator of Guam's only public hospital, please allow me to reiterate, Governor Lou Leon Guerrero's statements in her transmittal letter of Bill Number 93-38. I too would like to encourage more healthcare providers to provide the much-needed services for individuals on Medicaid coverage as they are among our most vulnerable patient population so that these individuals can have improved access and options for prenatal care, primary care, secondary prevention care and post-hostilization follow-up care. Just to add a little bit of information with regards to what Dr. Nguyen mentioned, that people, really the Medicaid patients do come into the emergency room because they don't get, you know, primary care or prevention care. On the average, we see 490 Medicaid patients in our ER. That's about 36% of the total patient population that come through ER annually. It's about 16,234 annually of all the total patients that come through ER, 36% of them are Medicaid. So you can see the usage, the utilization of the emergency room because they don't have access to primary care or, you know, prevention care. So I thank you for considering, for considering my comments on Bill Number 118-38 explaining our views and position in supporting the overall concept of this proposed legislation with recommendations to merge it with Bill Number 93-38 so that the enactment and implementation process is clear and simple and not compromise the government of Guam's BPT bond indentures. Sensentemente, Lilian.
Sisus Massey, Lilian. It looks like everyone will be testifying on both bills. So what I'm going to do is have you test, speak now, and then I'll read the title of bill, the next bill so that our panel can ask you questions on both bills. It just seems efficient. So Teresa Ariola, DPHSS Director, please proceed.
Thank you, Hafidé, Chairman Duñez and members of the 38th Guam Legislature. My name is Teresa Ariola, the Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you, before you today on Bill 93-38, Relative to Exempting Amounts Received from Medicaid Payments for Eligible Services by Healthcare Providers from Business Privilege Taxes, a measure introduced by the Committee on Rules on behalf of Governor Lou Leon Guerrero, as well as the opportunity to speak on Bill 118-38, CRR, COR, Relative to Establishing a Business Privilege Tax Discount on Medicaid Receipts, to be known as the Guam Medicaid Access Enhancement Act, introduced by Senator Sabrina Salas-Montanani. As both bills will have similar effect to the Department of Public Health and Social Services, this testimony will apply to both bills. DPHSS agrees with the proposed intent of both bills, 93 and 118. Today, 40,959 residents are Medicaid insured and can only benefit from a wider pool of local Medicaid providers, eliminating the financial barriers encountered when going off island for additional care. Bills 93 and 118 will provide a lucrative offer to local providers to accept Medicaid patients by exempting amounts received from Medicaid payments from BPT. Today, Guam Medicaid has 177 providers of different disciplines that will immediately benefit. Both bills have a positive effect for providers. However, it should be mentioned that the reality is both bills will result in less revenues to the general fund. Given the Guam Medicaid operates a matching grant program, sufficient local funding through the general fund must continue to be prioritized to ensure compliance with the federal mandated match requirements. Should either of the bills become law, the existing limited local resources available for healthcare delivery will be impacted. Just for reference, FY '24 payouts to current local providers was 197,780,934. So we paid out current providers at that amount, millions of dollars that required a matching fund. In light of the fiscal notes, Bill 93 and Bill 118, we strongly urge the committee to substitute either bill with the following language. This is the same language that my colleague, Lilian Posados, had offered. As governor, and so I won't repeat the, I won't read the whole thing, but section one and section two is a new subsection, 58, 128 point eight, and added to chapter 58, Title 12, Guam Code annotated. As Governor Lou Leon Guerrero stated in her transmittal letter of Bill 93, we want to encourage more healthcare providers to serve Medicaid patients who are among our most vulnerable. This language complies, accomplishes the intent of both bills without compromising the government of Guam's BPT bond indentures. A potential alternative to the bills is to leverage the MIP as a supplemental program to Guam Medicaid. Under this approach, Medicaid will continue to provide primary coverage while MIP addresses any shortfalls. This proposed method maximizes local financial resources while offering an effective and efficient solution to enhance provider participation. While there may be some technical issues that need to be addressed, the department is open to working with the committee to merge both bills, which will net in expanding access to preventive care, thereby reducing hospital visits and admissions that are more expensive. DPHSS touches the lives of people on Guam in multiple ways, such as offering access to food through USDA's Food and Nutrition Program known as SNAP and access to medical care via the Guam Medicaid Program. One of the goals of the department is to create environments and systems that support individual and community well-being. This is done by providing access to healthcare, preventive care and addressing social determinants of health, thereby ensuring healthier outcomes in our community. Both Bills 93 and 118 support this goal. Thank you for this, for your time and we look forward to the intent of these two bills becoming a reality. Respectfully submitted by myself. Thank you.
Sisus Massey, Director Ariola. And we have also put up on the screen now so that our, those that are watching us as well as those who may watch this again, that we are now hearing both bills. So Jane Flores, you recognize it this time?
Thank you, Committee Chair Duñez, Hafidé Senator Duñez and Committee members. My name is Jane Flores. I'm the Director of the Bureau of Women's Affairs for the Government of Guam. The BWA respectfully submits the following testimony on both Bills 118-38 and 93-38. About two months ago, a young woman visited the Bureau of Women's Affairs office. At the time, she was several months pregnant. She had left her job under very stressful circumstances and did not have healthcare. She had just enrolled in Medicaid and told me it was very difficult to find a doctor because many clinics on our island do not take Medicaid and asked if I could help. This woman manifested the issue with our OB shortage on Guam, which is exacerbated by the fact that even clinics where family practice doctors are trained to deliver babies do not take Medicaid. GMH's Labor and Delivery Unit has noted that nearly 20%, as Administrator Posados can confirm, of the patients who walk into GMH to deliver a baby have never seen a doctor, which is very, very dangerous for them. BWA agrees with the proposed concept in both Bill 93 proposed by Governor Leon Guerrero and Bill 118 proposed by Senator Salas-Montanani to encourage more healthcare providers to provide services to Medicaid patients by exempting the amounts received from Medicaid payments for eligible services by healthcare providers from the business privilege tax. Bill 118 would be the more complicated of the two measures to implement, as Director Ariola has pointed out, given its proposed percentage discount, and we are open to merging the efforts of the two measures. And because we all work for the same boss, we all have the, the same suggestion about the substitute language with regard to the 100% rebate on unplugged BPT from Medicaid payments as Director Ariola. as Director Ariola and Administrator Posadas have noted, and that they be issued for a period not to exceed 20 years through a qualifying certificate, and that GIDEA take care of the QC. And we all have the same close to, so about Governor Leon Guerrero and about, we want you to encourage more healthcare providers to serve Medicaid patients who, like the woman who came into my office, are among our most vulnerable. The language that is proposed accomplishes the intent of both bills without compromising the government's BPT bond indentures. Si, Jesus, Masi, for the opportunity to provide this testimony. Thank you, Senator Brief, and all of the senators who co-sponsored Bill 118 for your efforts to help encourage healthcare providers to serve our most vulnerable. Thank you.
Si, Jesus, Masi, Director Flores. And sir, identify yourself for the record and your testimony and whom you're testifying for, for record-keeping purposes. Please proceed.
Hafaday, good morning. My name is Elias Apalencia, and I'm actually here representing my dental clinic, Derido Dental Center. I'm speaking in support of Bill 118-38-COR. And again, Hafaday, honorable members of the 38th Guam Legislature. Again, my name is Elias Apalencia. I'm the Operations Manager at my dental practice, and we've proudly served Medicaid patients for the last 10 years. I'm here today to express my strong support for the Guam Medicaid Access Enhancement Act. Every day in our clinic, we face difficult choices. When Medicaid patients call seeking care, we must weigh our commitment serving our community against financial sustainability of our practice. The reimbursement rates of Medicaid are significantly lower than private insurance, yet we continue to reserve appointment slots for these patients because we believe healthcare is a right, not a privilege. Our island, we believe, faces a healthcare crisis with nearly 40,000 members in the Medicaid program. Many of our vulnerable neighbors struggle to find providers willing to accept their insurance. This isn't because providers don't care, it's because the financial equation simply doesn't work. Currently, we pay full 5% business privilege tax to every dollar of Medicaid receipts despite receiving significantly lower reimbursements for these services. This creates a double financial burden that discourages a lot of providers from participating and limits access points on our island. The proposed legislation addresses this imbalance with a thoughtful tiered approach. The base 20% discount on business privilege taxes for Medicaid receipts would provide immediate relief to existing providers like us. But what truly excites me about this bill is how it incentivizes growth and expanded access through additional discounts for each qualified healthcare professional service location dedicated to Medicaid patients. You know, in our niche of healthcare, in dental, what happens when we have patients that come in to our practice? We really try our best to accommodate them as much as we can. I know with public health, no longer having dental department, we've been seeing a greater, I guess, influx of Medicaid patients, which we can't always accommodate just due to really just the low compensation from Medicaid. No matter how hard we try, you know, with the cost of materials for medical, dental, increasing, it's been harder and harder for us to really see Medicaid patients. And with this bill, it really does incentivize a little bit more to be able to see more Medicaid patients, more families, children mostly. So what happens with Medicaid patients when they cannot find care, particularly for dental? It's really concerning. Delayed dental treatment doesn't just lead to more complex dental procedures, it creates serious cascading health effects. Research published in the Journal of American Heart Association has established clear links between poor oral health and cardiovascular disease, finding that periodontal disease increases the risk of heart attacks by nearly 50%. Studies in the Journal of Clinical Periodontology have demonstrated that untreated gum infections can lead to poor glycemic control in diabetics, which research in Journal of Alzheimer's Disease has found also connections between oral bacteria and cognitive decline. So, and these aren't just abstract statistics. They represent real suffering that could be prevented with timely access to care. When our Medicaid patients must wait months for appointments because too few providers accept their insurance, small cavities become root canals, gingivitis becomes periodontitis, and preventable conditions escalate into systemic health crisis that ultimately costs our healthcare system exponentially more. By incentivizing preventive and routine care through an expanded provider network, this bill represents both compensation, both a compassionate policy and a fiscal responsibility. For a small practice like ours, these incentives could transform our ability to serve Guam's medical population. We've always wanted to increase the number of Medicaid patients we serve, but the financial constraints have made this challenging. The graduated tax, sorry, the graduated tax discount structure proposed in this bill would finally move in economically feasible for us to dedicate more of our practice to Medicaid service without compromising our financial stability. This means more children receiving essential preventive services, more elderly patients maintaining the oral health, and more working families accessing care they currently struggle to find. The self-certification option is especially valuable, allowing providers to commit to expansion with immediate tax benefits while building capacity over three years. This balanced approach combines urgency with accountability through verification measures and appropriate penalties for non-compliance. Beyond the financial aspects, this bill would create additional audit trails that strengthen program integrity. As healthcare professionals, we share your commitment to preventing fraud and ensuring that Medicaid funds directly benefit patients. Our clinic has always prioritized serving all members of our community regardless of insurance status, but we cannot deny the financial reality that limits how many Medicaid patients we can accommodate. This bill would not only help sustain existing Medicaid providers but could also encourage new providers to join the program and expand points across our island. So I urge your support of the Guam Medicaid Access Enhancement Act as a critical step towards ensuring that all of our people have access to the healthcare they deserve. This is not just about business, it's about building a healthier, more equitable Guam. Si, Jesus, Masi.
Si, Jesus, Masi, Elias. I don't know if you signed in under Bill 93 because I don't have you on the 118. So can you please sign in so that we can have your information for the committee report?
Okay.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
So before I go to the panel, for those who may have just joined us, watching us on TV, in the beginning, I opened with the title of Bill 93-38-COR, and it's introduced by the Committee on Rules by request of Imaga Hagan Guahan, the Governor of Guam, in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam. This bill is an act to add a new Item 40 to 26203 of Chapter 26, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Exempting Amounts Received from Medicaid Payments for Eligible Services by Healthcare Providers from Business Privilege Taxes. So since the panel has testified on both bills and we are advertising both bills, I will ask our panelists, our senators, to please ask questions on both of these measures, starting with the author, Senator Montanani.
I will refrain from asking my questions until the end, prior to my closing comments. Thank you.
Si, Jesus, Masi, Senator Montanani. Senator Vice Speaker, Tony Arnaud.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions for the panel. I just thank them for coming down and testifying on both bills. I think this is a way forward for us to actually see how is it that we can give more medical access to our people and actually coming up with a final bill, a final solution for this. Like Dr. Manaloto had mentioned before, it's not the silver bullet, but at least it's a start, and we can go from here and actually move forward and have progress for our people and the healthcare that they seek and actually that we can provide as a community. So thank you for coming down for your testimonies.
Si, Jesus, Masi, Vice Speaker, Tony Arnaud, also Vice Chair of this committee, Senator Telo, Taidegui.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon to those, or good morning still, I think, or in between. Thank you so much for your testimonies today. I was hoping that GIDEA would be here, considering, you know, the comments that you made earlier. They would be providing rules and regulations, as that was just mentioned earlier in your testimony, for both of them. Because then they would ask, you know, have questions with regards to what would happen if healthcare providers claim the discount through self-certification but failed to meet the three-year requirement scenario? What does this have to do actually with the QC as well? And, you know, I was reading the BBMR's fiscal note, and I just wanted to verify the numbers here. They're saying that, and I'm sure the two of you have both read the BBMR report, you haven't had a chance. Okay, well, this equates, it says here that based on the most recent Office of Public Audit Performance Audit Report Number 22503, the Department of Public Health and Social Services Medicaid programs from FY 2020 through FY 2022, the total reimbursement Medicaid claims were approximately $399.6 million. This equates to an average annual collection for these three years at $133.2 million or $6.6 million BPT collections, assuming that the current 5% BPT is levied on the entirety of reimbursement Medicaid claims. Does that, you know, sound correct to you, Director Ariola? That amount, the $6.6 million per year?
Probably. I'm not sure. This is, you mentioned it was 2020 to 2022.
Right.
I wouldn't need to look it up, but if that's what BBMR is stating in their fiscal note, I'm sure that's what it is.
That's what it is, so...
But that's for years 20 to 22.
Right, right. But it's saying that it's approximately $6.6 million annually is what we're looking at as far as funding for the 5% BPT that's taken out. So you're getting basically $133.2 million annually of payout. Is that correct?
Payout in what?
Well, it says $399.6 million for those two years in total reimbursement Medicareed claims. Okay?
Okay.
Does that sound about right? $366 million is quite a bit.
I don't know about those years, but I'm sure if, I would have to go back and confirm that.
Yeah, it's giving you an example, you know, of those particular years. I mean, it could actually be a little bit more, a little bit higher.
Sure.
You know, but then again, you look at our population now, it's quite substantially different compared to, you know, post-COVID or pre-COVID.
Pre-COVID, or during COVID.
Yeah, and then how it went down from 177 down to 155,000 individuals. So we can say it's probably around that size. But Lilian, are you familiar with these numbers? Because I know you were shaking your head.
No, I'm not.
Okay, well, you know, we're just trying to get the impact, you know, the savings, not, well, the savings to these physicians or these clinics that can, you know, give them incentive to be a part of this program, to show them that it's substantial, at the same time to see what the impact that will cause the government of Guam, you know, whether it's tax credits or something like this, you know, lowering the BPT. We need to see a fiscal impact that it's going to cause the government because what we're going to have to do is subsidize, what we're already having to do right now is subsidize quite substantially with DOE, capital improvement projects that are due, yeah, bless you, capital improvement projects due at Guam Memorial Hospital that's substantially needed, as well as other areas that are, we're losing funding from federal grants. But it's unfortunate, we can't get a true number from BBMR. They were unable to give it to us, but they did give us those numbers, so I guess we can try and do the math ourself. Other than that, without, you know, GIDEA here trying to tell us how long it'll take, you know, because the question regarding their input would have been very helpful, maybe we can incorporate other requirements in the legislation. Excuse me, I know I'm coming down with something. In the legislation, that might be very helpful to move things forward. We don't want any hurdles in the way of progress and definitely the assistance that needed to those most vulnerable. So other than that, I look forward to GIDEA, and I will be reaching out to them to try and get some testimony from them as well.
Senator Taidegui, if I can, if I can share, the testimony that the three of us had introduced of similar suggestive, that was definitely in concert with GIDEA. So you can, of course, confirm that they're not here, but that language was proffered through GIDEA by discussion, the administration with GIDEA. So just to bring some comfort, but of course, you can always reach out to get direct.
Absolutely. And then I also encourage them to write their own testimony to concur with your testimony as well and ensure that if there's any cost needed, sometimes when we give other agencies like yourself, especially public health, a task to do, it's going to take resources to do those tasks. So we want to ensure that GIDEA, if they're going to have, if they can find any funding in order to put these rules and regulations together, go through the process, it's any cost to them. So other than that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Si, Jesus, Masi, Senator Taidegui, Senator Trelahi.
Si, Jesus, Masi. So in the fiscal note, as what Senator Taidegui just read, so they talk about the impact if we, if we removed the 5% from all current Medicaid providers, as if they were all paying 5% BPT and not one of the lower rates of BPT, and that would be $6.6 million. It doesn't give us any information as to what impact this bill might have on BPT if, as some of the doctors hope, that other providers will step up and accept Medicaid. Like, how many providers are there? I was surprised public health testimony doesn't include anything like that. How many potential providers are there who you are looking to include in the Medicaid program that are currently refusing to accept Medicaid? And have, do we have any research in the department regarding their reasons for not accepting Medicaid? And we saw the audit recently, and it was almost the opposite. It's like these providers who are submitting claims for Medicaid were not even registered providers according to that audit or certified or something. Yeah, so that sounds like the opposite problem to me. But do you have any indication of how many other providers might be enticed by this incentive to accept Medicaid and why they are not accepting Medicaid right now?
We don't. However, as it is proposed, it's an incentive and a start, but it's a combination of various things. In the past, there was an issue of timeliness in payment, which is no longer the issue. I'm proud to say that in the last six months or so, we have been in the acceptable 45-day turnaround time for business practice to pay off providers and vendors. And so I'm happy for that. However, like everything, we hope that other providers will come in, in light of the proposed measure. If they don't, then there's no impact to the BPT. But if they do, then we know it would be a result directly because of the measure or some form of the measure that passes.
Do you have a number of providers that are not accepting Medicaid that have refused?
We can, we can get that number based on, of course, licensing board minus the 177 providers that currently, we can give you that number.
That you have on your list? So you have a list of those that are providing?
We have a list of all providers that have licenses to do business on Guam, and then we can subtract that from the 177 that are currently taken, and then that would be the potential pool of those who would come on board.
Do the, do we have a potential to... Do the, do we have a potential to, are we maxing out on our Medicaid right now? Do we have a potential to increase services by additional providers, or are we just going to be decreasing services from the existing providers, going to other providers?
Well, the effort of the Department of Public Health, of course, is always outreach, and so we have been doing tremendous amount of outreach just last, just yesterday, the outreach at the Sinohania in line with a partnership with the Lions Club. We are doing almost outreach every weekend, whether it's with the FAS community, or, or partners like the Lions Club, or Guam Homeless Coalition, to increase the number of people that, that come on board to be covered Medicaid. I know that many people have mentioned the 30,000, but if you look at my testimony, we are really at 40,000, almost 41,000 actually, members of our community that are Medicaid-covered. So as more people get on board, there's going to be an increase of demand for more, and we want to ensure that the, just a little plug-in for the Community Health Center, that the Community Health Center, which we have one in Daredo and in Alahan, are open to all folks, not, you know, I want to, I want to dispel the, the mindset that the Community Health Centers are only for either Medicaid or the, the indigent population, but we can take any, any people who are looking for primary care. And so when I hear of Jane's story about the woman who couldn't find a primary care, I wish that everybody understands that the community center is a primary care provider, and we will take them. And I'm very happy to say that we're going to have a part-time OB. So as things go on board, I am hiring a lot more doctors. I, I'm hoping, I'm praying, that it has something to do with, with maybe the streamlining of process and process improvement, and they're, they're getting a little bit more comfortable, and a lot more, comfortable, I guess, and, and has some, some assurances that the government process and the Community Health Center has improved. And so that's probably why I'm getting such an influx of responses for more providers to come on board for the Community Health Clinic. But again, we don't have the data specifically, like a, a survey that went out to perhaps, like the Guam Medical Society, which we, we all know that not all the providers are members of the medical society, but you know, that's a start, and I know that you senators asked Dr. Nguyen for that, to reach out. But again, this is not going to be a sure thing, but it's a start. And I think when you have things like incentivizing new providers to, as Elijah had mentioned, he's a provider, but it will definitely allow him to take more Medicaid folks if, if the do, of the, if, if the cost of doing business is, is more advantageous to him. So he would probably open his dental clinic to take more medical, Medicaid appointments. And so it's an incentive, and I also want to say that the incentive is, you know, the mention of Amat Chalan Amat, which is Kai Akimoto, and all the, all the young aspiring doctors that call Guam home. Chalan Amat is a network that these young professionals have decided to become one, and figure out how can they help in the process of how to get them back to Guam, so it's more advantageous to Guam. So they're part of the public health team of helping streamline how they, because these folks all want to come back home. So we need to prepare for the next generation of providers to come to Guam. And so, again, not a catch-all, no guarantees, but if there's, if, regarding the measure, right, there's no guarantee, it's still the provider's call, but I have to say that if it's, if it's going to bring the cost of doing business in their clinics or their private practice, that it's going to be a major incentive for them. I, I mean, I just have to believe the cost of doing business is going to help, or reducing the cost of doing business. I also want to say that there, there was a mention about loan repayment. We have a lot of kids who are off island, going to medical school, that are looking of ways to come back home and to pay back their loans. Again, the Community Health Clinic, run by Public Health, is that avenue. We can provide loan repayment, because we're a sort of federally qualified health clinic, recognized by the feds. And so a lot more education of how we can get them, and that's probably why I'm getting more interest of doctors that want to come on board with CHC. So not, not a final, again, it's not going to guarantee that everybody who is not a provider today will become a provider, but if, but it may allow some to consider, because the cost of doing business would be lower, but even if we increase it by, you know, 10 more doctors that can take Medicaid patients, then we're in better shape than we are today. No guarantees, but then, no, no sweat off of, off of BPT either, if they don't.
What do you mean? Yes, huge sweat off of BPT, huge revenues that are currently being dedicated to GMH, Guam Cancer Trust Fund, and other very important things. So even your revised language that you three are proposing, that says we're going to rebate it, is not going to lessen that impact. We are still going to have to cut that from the amount that, I mean, I guess it's a trick that we're going to continue to give GMH and the others that are going, receiving BPT, and then we're just going to cut it somewhere else. So I guess that's the proposal, but it's, it's just one of those things, they came in here the other day, said robbing Peter to pay Paul, it's, it's that. We're going to take it from the back end of the receipts versus the front end of the receipts, but it's less money for appropriation, for sure. Is there something?
Yes, Senator, I would like to comment on that, just to consider the fact that if more people can go to these clinics and get primary care upfront, that lessens the impact on our, on the hospital greatly. My daughter is a nurse, as you know.
I agree with you 100% if.
She says, she sees so many patients in the ICU who could have gone to a clinic and gotten treatment and been, gone on their merry way, but they wait, and they wait, and they wait, and they wait until something is irreversible. So that is a huge impact, even with regard to our...
And does she say that it's the 5% BPT on the Medicaid providers that we already have that is actually causing that?
No.
No, right? So that's why I'm just saying, the direct correlation is really, it's a, it's kind of a roundabout, but we are going to have a direct impact on the revenue available for GMH, for DOE, for everybody. That is the case with this. And we have a big if, these providers are going to accept. But I agree, and I very much agree with the Director of Public Health, that these community centers, especially because they also accept Medicaid, are huge. It's huge for us that we have to get them up to speed. We have, we need, we, we are missing our big one, the middle one in the middle, that used to, according to the nurses, we've seen the decrease in prenatal care. Do you have a list of, are there OB-GYNs on Guam that do not accept Medicaid? Or not even OB-GYNs, but those who are acting as OB-GYNs at the hospital that are not accepting Medicaid in their private capacity?
When I was researching for the, the young woman who came into my office, the only clinics that we found that would accept a Medicaid are SDA, and then, as Dr. Nguyen mentioned, sometimes Dr. Shea, if, if the patient is...
So the other providers, even those who are used, allowed hospital privileges at GMH are not even accepting Medicaid in their private...
I do know that the new Famalawen Wellness Center that has opened up does not accept Medicaid.
Yeah, I wonder if tying hospital privileges to accepting Medicaid in your private practice is, is something of an incentive as well, because we have these other doctors who are willing, and yet not, like SDA does not have hospital privileges, they, that's what they were saying. Anyways, that's something for another bill, but, but just other incentives to consider because, because of the financial impact, that's very direct here. Director Ariola, when you talked about the MIP as a supplemental to this Guam Medicaid to address shortfalls, where, where are the shortfalls? I mean, are you saying one patient is getting their Medicaid at AMC, for example? What is the shortfall? Nothing to that patient, right? So how would it work?
Not just that patient, that was just a suggestive, a suggestion that you senators can, can consider, as making it a safety net, which in the end, it really is already a safety net.
It is already, yeah. All right, I know, and so, thank you for administering that program as well. It was great to shift so many of those patients from MIP to Medicaid, I think, or do we have any hope of a different Medicaid rate? Because the big complaint is the Medicaid reimbursement rate.
Yes, and, and I know that that's a, a concern that we have no control over, and in light of the federal actions that are happening, we are watching it very carefully. At, at this point, I am just going to be happy if we can keep Medicaid intact right now.
Intact, yes, I understand.
So I have a lot of eyes and ears on the Medicaid side. I have at least three or four very early Eastern Standard Time Zooms, that different Medicaid associations that I'm involved in are tracking and doing impact. So, no, the answer is no, I don't know, but at this point, in light of the federal movements, I would be happy if things would just stay the same right now.
Thank you. So I guess I, I also support, I can see, you know, the logic in we're giving them a lesser rate, and then we're mandating them to pay BPT, so there's less of an incentive to keep this business, but I'm very grateful for those who do have it. I would like to see Mr. Chair from Rev and Tax, some information that's for real, in addition to this BBMR comments about what, how many people we're talking about who actually might be on the 5% versus the 3% or other BPT, and, and of course, from Public Health, how many more providers might avail of this who are not currently providing? Dr. Nguyen made it sound like it's the specialists, but, Doc, Jane, you said, Ms. Flores' testimony is that it's family care physicians, it's even, did you say Guma Famalawen?
The new Famalawen Wellness Center that opened, just opened up, they do not currently take Medicaid, that may change in the future, but currently, they do not take, they just started, so they are not taking Medicaid.
All right, and then of course...
We can get that information.
Thank you.
To the senators.
I wanted to ask the doctor from the dental clinic, or any of them, so what the impact would be, and maybe, Mr. Chair, you, you could make this, clarify this later on, that, so the bill currently says you get 20% off on all Medicaid receipts, and then you get 20% off on every place where, like, you provide these services? So if you have one clinic, that's another 20% off, two clinics, another 40% off. So it's 20 plus the 20 for the location, and then it says 20% for every provider in your location, if you have five doctors, that's, and then it's, the max is 100% of it. So I guess I just...
And keep in mind, it's not just the doctors, but also like physical therapists, they are considered in the definition of healthcare providers, physical therapists, or whatever other healthcare professionals in that clinic.
All right, so I'm, one more time, Director Ariola, is there a potential that currently what, what BBMR projects as 6.6 million impact could be more, because there is more Medicaid benefits to be used?
I think the answer would be yes. However, again, making sure that people get primary care, which is a less expensive, expensive healthcare expense, rather than not having more options out there, so that they go to Lillian's, who is more expensive?
Yeah.
I think would be helpful.
Hospital care, no BPTs are involved, so we don't really see that impact here, but, but we're seeing 6.6 million out in the privates, or out in the pre-hospital care, or post-hospital care. And yeah, I just kind of want to know, how do we project the full impact of the measure, if there may be more providers, more services, not, not just spreading it differently, right? You're saying there's a potential for more.
Potential for more.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too. All right, Sadhus Masih, thank you all for your testimony. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
This is Masih, Senator Chalahi. Senator Cabo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Sadhus Masih. Have a day en buenos, everyone, again. Thank you for all your testimonies. You know, I'm just, I, I was just looking at the delayed realization of Medicaid access improvements. So, you know, providers using the self-certification pathway may not deliver expanded Medicaid services immediately, delaying intended access improvements by up to three years. The community may not feel the impact on a short term, especially if enforcement mechanisms are not timely or effective. So for DPHSS, I, I just wanted to ask, what immediate impact is expected in Medicaid access within the first year of implementation? And how will DPHSS verify provider progress during the three-year self-certification period?
Well, we'll know immediately after the passage of, of the measure, or a form of the measure, in the number of providers that, that, that go on board, come on board. I mean, we're, we can do our educational effort to, in the, when the measure, or a form of the measure, is passed, we'll, we'll definitely put it out, since in my, in my house, I'm also the licensing, I oversee the licensing board office, so that'd be very easy to just get the measure out and introduce the, the availability, and see how many folks will come back in and want to provide, to, to be a Medicaid provider. So we will almost see that immediately, or, or maybe not, because some people need to figure out, again, it's still a provider decision, and they have to figure out whether their, the cost of doing business, or the, or, or they have the capacity in their business to expand the number of appointments, that can be opened up, and hopefully, because of the measure, open up to Medicaid patients. So it could be immediate or delayed, I'm not quite sure, but on the public health side, if a form of the measure is introduced, we can quickly get the word out through our licensing board and all, everybody who is licensed. So we'll see.
If I may, on the clinical side, perhaps, probably, the high number of Medicaid patients coming into ER, we may see probably a, a decrease. The length of stay in the hospital, perhaps, maybe may be decreased, because, you know, they can, they can get prevention care in the clinics, and so therefore, their health is a little bit more manageable, and not as severe, as Ms. Flores mentioned, that, you know, these people come in because they don't have the preventive care, so they wait till they're really, really, really sick, and then they end up staying longer, and the treatment that they need is, is more complicated and more numerous. So we may see that, hopefully, that we see it that way.
And, you know, Ms. Lillian gets a lion's share of my Medicaid payments, so I would like to see that decreased as well, and go to providers, other providers. I mean, I'm sure she doesn't mind that. If we just keep the hospital for acute care, and not a replacement... If we just keep the hospital for acute care and not a replacement for primary care, that would be wonderful.
I appreciate both your answers. It's true, you know, we can alleviate the foot traffic for, and you can just deal with, like, most severe cases as opposed to just checkups and stuff. And it also helps out the little clinics, you know, that potentially will participate in this program. So on that note, I really just wanted to extract that from you guys. And thank you for your testimonies, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I don't have further questions.
Sidus Massey, Senator Cabo, Senator Gumitato.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just again, for the record, I know it was mentioned earlier, Mr. Chair, again, in the fiscal note on the bill, BBMR stated that based on the most recent Office of the Public Accountability Performance Audit Report, this is number 25-03 of DPHSS's Medicaid program, from FY 2020 through FY 2022, the total reimbursed Medicaid claims was approximately $399 million. Mr. Chair, according to DPHSS, in their own reports, 45,433 individuals participated in the Medicaid program as of the first quarter of fiscal year 2024. I know it was mentioned, but I want to reiterate it for the folks that are listening today. The 45,433 figure, and this is for Bill 118, it included 24,497 females and 20,936 males. The village with the highest participation rate was in Dedidil, with 15,020 residents, or 33.06%, making up the total number of Medicaid clients at the time. Now, the costs that are associated with inpatient hospital services represented the largest expense at $18,421,355.14, or 36.57% of the $50.3 million that was spent at the end of the first quarter of fiscal year 2024. Now, according to the Office of Public Accountability's report, some Medicaid providers, as we heard this morning, or affiliated physicians delivering services lacked medical and/or DEA licenses and were without documented renewals on file. How many Medicaid providers, if I could ask this morning of the panel, are current with their licensure requirements, and to what extent, I think as we heard earlier, has this situation impacted the availability of providers who are both eligible and willing to treat Medicaid patients?
I'll take that question. Licensing board is under my wheelhouse, so I can tell you now that the medical board meets very regularly, very long and extensive. We are looking very closely. I don't have a specific figure on how many are delinquent, but I know that we stay on top of it. If they are not on top of it, they don't get Medicaid reimbursement. So it's very tied in. We have a new MOU between the Licensing Office and the Medicaid State Office that really, really monitors that recently. And so I can't speak for the past, but definitely during my time, it's, we're on it. And so if they are not currently licensed, unless they were licensed at the time of service, they would not be reimbursed.
All right, thank you, Therese, and I'm hoping that for the markup report, that you can provide that back to the committee. It will help, at least in terms of the discussion on Bill 118. I only have one more question on 118, if I could. In the same OPA report, it revealed that inactive Medicaid providers continued to receive Medicaid payments at the time of the audit. How is DPHSS and the government of Guam impacted by allowing inactive Medicaid providers to continue their service, and what legal liabilities, if any, could we face as a government if this practice continues?
Sorry. Thank you, Senator. I am reminded by my great team behind me that the Medicaid waiver, there was a waiver during that extended years beyond, I think we're still on the waiver, are we not? The waiver just ended? Yeah, during the public health emergency, there was a waiver to ensure that people continue to get the care they needed during the COVID years. So there was a waiver that we were granted that allowed the providers to not have to go through the process of recertification. Since then, they have all been recertified or working towards that recertification or relicensing. And so, again, I just want to reiterate, it was during the COVID period that the waiver was enforced, that, and that was actually CMS allowed us to continue to have providers see patients get reimbursed despite their renewal of their license. But since then, since the public emergency has been lifted, they've all had to be renewed, and so we're on that.
All right, thank you, Therese, and I appreciate that, and hoping that, again, for the markup, we can get that clarification. Now, on Bill 93, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make note for the record that in her March 12, 2025 letter that transmitted the bill to us here at the Guam Legislature, the governor wrote that if you treat the most vulnerable among us, the men, women, and children on Medicaid, every cent of that revenue should be exempt from the business privilege tax. By doing so, we commit new resources to actual treatment, and it may increase the number of medical professionals willing to treat those who need it. Now, of the 984 providers who are identified on the Guam Board of Medical Examiners website currently accepting Medicaid patients, how many years on average, maybe, could you help, Therese, have these providers accepted Medicaid patients since they became participating providers?
I don't have that, but I can definitely get that to you. How many years?
Yes, how many years on average?
I would have to say, if I had to guess, that most, once they become Medicaid providers, they continue to be Medicaid providers. These are very dedicated professionals that, once they start, they want to help the most vulnerable of our population and see the need to ensure that preventive care is a priority. So if I had to guess, Senator, not doing an audit of the licenses and how long they actually stay, a provider, I would say probably the lifetime of their license.
Okay, and I'm hoping that, again, as we did with 118 for the committee, I'm hoping that in Bill 93, just a bit of a clarification, again, it would help us in our decision-making process here in our branch. Mr. Chair, I only have one more question. With respect to urgent care services and primary care visits, what efforts, including conducting a cost analysis, have been made either by DPHSS or even GMH to provide these services for Medicaid underinsured and uninsured patients by focusing on contracting physician services while providing the facilities, equipment, supplies, and medical support staff in-house?
Do you want to take that first?
Sure, I'll take that one. In terms of the hospital perspective, we have internal medicine doctors who are then GG1 employees, who are called hospitalists. And so any patient that comes to the emergency room, regardless whether they're insured or, you know, uninsured or Medicaid, the physician on duty who is a hospitalist will then be the one to attend to that patient. If there are private patients with private doctors, then they are the ones who admit. But those under Medicaid or house cases, those hospitalists are the ones who are then assigned to care for those patients, and they are GG1-employed doctors.
Thank you, Lillian. Therese, are you okay?
You can repeat the question one more time.
Again, going back to the, is there any efforts to conduct a cost analysis about using these services for Medicaid, maybe in support of in-house support services, perhaps?
Again, the community health centers are, who we take Medicaid patients, we're available for them. We have not done a cost analysis, however, we have a lion's share, I don't even have the exact number, I should, but I apologize that I don't have the lion's share. Most of the 40,000 Medicaid patients come through our community health clinics. We appreciate very much the private sector doctors that take and decompress some of that. We're always looking forward and promoting the community health center as a means for preventive care. I think we're doing a better job in public health and the community health centers of making sure that everybody is aware that the stigma that has been tagged to the community health center for many decades, that it's really only there for the indigent population, is no longer there. So we actually have a lot of patients that are even privately insured, which, again, helps with the financial structure of the sustainability of the community health clinic. So no to, is there an exact study? However, the more mix of population that we get, whether it's from Medicaid or privately third-party insurance, will make the community health center more viable, and again, always open to everyone, and mostly our Medicaid patients. I don't know if that answers your question, but no to, has there been a study?
Okay, in 2025, I think it's time for us to change that perception of what happens at our community health clinics. And also, as the Office of the Governor is asking for this measure, it is as important to provide that support and information that we're asking for us to ensure that we can make a decision here at the legislature. Thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for the time.
Sidus Massey, Senator Gumitato. So with the author of the bill, I'd like to close, and maybe if you have any comments on the governor's submission as well, Senator Matanani.
I don't have any comments on the governor's submission, but thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to everyone that came forward in providing testimony. When we truly listen, we're reminded why we're here, and that is to serve, to advocate, and to lead with compassion and courage. I am grateful also to my colleagues for asking the tough questions, necessary questions. It's in those questions that we find clarity, and in honest conversations like this, we find common ground. As author of this bill, I want to assure you that every piece of testimony, every concern, and every recommendation will be taken seriously. And I also want to just briefly comment regarding this concern for data, and I hope that my colleagues don't forget a key piece of data, and that is the 30,000-plus current Medicaid enrollees that are children, Manumco families, and pregnant women that are trying to get access to healthcare. And as we gather this data, I just want to make sure everybody knows that introducing this bill, regardless if we don't have all the data in front of us, the risk for me is absolutely worth it. This bill, it isn't about policy, it is about dignity, it's about fairness, it is about making sure that every family on Guam, regardless of income, has the chance to see a doctor, a dentist, to get treatment, and to live with peace of mind. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also wanted to acknowledge and thank the cosponsors of this bill, Vice Speaker Tony Ada, Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Jocelyn Augustine, Senator Jesse Luhon, Speaker Frank Blas Jr., Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Senator William Parkinson, Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes, and Senator Vince Borja. Thank you again.
Sidus Massey, Madam Chair, or Chair of the, or the author of the bill, excuse me, and I certainly do concur with your closing remarks, and we'll work hard to get this bill marked up. I want to thank the panel, you know, of course, Public Health, GMH, Women's Affairs for coming down and supporting both measures. We're going to endeavor to come out with the best product possible, and the committee will continue to do that work. So once again, thank you for showing up this morning, and also for advocating for access to care, particularly for the most vulnerable. This will conclude this morning's public hearing on Bill numbers 118 and 98-38COR. Committee will continue to accept written testimony on these bills within seven calendar days from today, which may be addressed to myself, Senator Christopher M. Duñez, as chairman of the committee, and mailed to 163 West Chalamont Santa Pampa, Alcatraz, 96910. You may also send your testimonies to Senator Duñez at guamlegislature.gov. This morning's public hearing is now adjourned. Time is now 11:09. Sidus Massey, we are in recess until we come back for the budget of Guam Memorial Hospital this afternoon at 2:00 PM. Sidus Massey.